Sorry, called the special committee, the whole meeting at Tuesday, February 11th, at 6:12 PM by our public clock.[12.01][12.01](Laughter). Looking for the approval of the agenda. All those in favor? Thank you. Looking for the adoption of the minutes of special committee, the whole, January 13th, 2014. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Oh, yes, there is. Oh, okay. No questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Yeah, I am. Moving on to old business 3.1, discussion tax rates, assessment values for 2014, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to have a brief discussion about a proposed tax rate in the current budget, five-year plan. There's been some discussion about the $73 and that it's 5% increase. And what I wanted to explain to committee is that last year, our tax increase was 3.43% to the average assessed home. Since last year and this year, our property assessment values have decreased about 2%. And so what this means in City of Callwood is that just to stay even with what our funding was last year, we have to get at least 2% back just to stay even. So, of course, we're up at 5%. So, in theory, our tax increase this year is about 3%, which is actually lower than what it was last year. The only reason it visually looks higher than last year is because our assessment values in the community overall went down so significantly.
That's it? Thank you. I'll go to the public. Public have any comment regarding that? Seeing none, I'll go to committee. Committee, any questions, comments? Great, thank you. Do we need to move to receive that, Mr. CAO? Or?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I think, well, the big thing here is that, at the moment, based on what the Director of Finance said, is that I think on an average house, we're looking at about a 5% increase, which is only about $73 per month, or something like $6 per day, or something like that. So, no?
A year.
A year, sorry. Yes.[163.88][163.88](Laughter) That's a bit much. So, the question is, is this council satisfied with that? Because that's really what the question's about.
Oh, so you would like a discussion on that?
Well, I think it would be useful, because again, you'll have, you can have the same discussion when it comes to council, but sometimes if you want us to adjust the budget, this is the time to tell us to go away and adjust it.
Okay, got it. I'm going to go back to the, we will discuss that in committee, but I'll go to the public since you sort of have a definition of what we're discussing. Did you have anything to say? Public?
Dewayne McNeil, 487 Sumar Place. How does this relate to your original proposal of cost of living plus 1% in relation to what our actual increase is going to be? Because wasn't there deflation last year?
Yeah, there was. But I'll look to our C, or, excuse me, our Director of Finance.
Yes, and basically, the way that I'm looking at the potential tax increase is based on the assessment, assessed value, since that is how we raise the taxes. The cost of living, this is, I think, was a council?
No, that's, sorry, that was actually just something I ran on.
Oh.
It's just me personally. That's a rob issue, that's not a committee issue.
So, I did not build a budget on a platform from 2011.
We'll talk about that later.[264.14][264.14](Laughter).
Another comment to also remember is that it's a very shaky area to get into when you start to do cost of living or consumer price index, because those calculations don't take into account maybe how much fuel is going to increase, or it's a very precise calculation, food, clothing, et cetera. It doesn't really go beyond that. So, I always like to kind of stay away from that as some sort of foundation for building, because it excludes so many other factors, electricity, hydro, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. I will come to the committee then. Councilor Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question, getting back to your comment about the 5% and how it relates to the reduction in assessed value. So, is that, in other words, does that mean that takes into account the increase in mill rate to make up the difference? So, you know, as prices increase significantly, the mill rate generally goes down to keep an even keel. If they go down, it comes up to maintain an even keel. Is that what you're talking about, in essence?
Yes, through the chair to Councilor Logan. The mill rate will go up slightly from what it was last year to take into account the fact assessments have gone down.
And that's where the 2% comes in?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. So, I guess, in essence, then, really, what, you know, we should probably just get rid of that 5% figure, because we're just simply adjusting the mill rate so we have status quo, and then we're building on that. So, really, it is only a 3% tax increase. I, you know, and I just don't want that message to get lost.
Right.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You got, I'm sorry, yeah, no, Director of Finance.
Yes, no, that's exactly correct. That's why I felt it was important to bring it forward, because that loss in assessed value could get, could get lost. And in town of Ural, they're actually over 6% this year.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Culleton?
Thank you. Through you to the Director of Finance, just another question of clarification, because the other thing that always muddies the water around these budget figures are, as our population grows each year, we also have, we have a bigger budget, but it's spread amongst more people. So, therefore, even, you know, the budget might increase even without the average property home and paying more. Can you comment on that?
Yes, where all things are equal, if we have more houses to tax in the community, there's going to be more revenue available. But in the case of this year, while we did see a slight increase in the number of taxable properties, the assessment value went down significantly more than what we gained. Also, not taken into account in the budget document at this time is what our new development impact, we don't know that. So, that will kind of be gravy to the city, because we should know that before the notices are sent out, but busy assessments have not given us that information at this time. So, if it's at all possible, by the time we do the tax rate bylaw, it's possible that it could go down, but at this point, we have to go with what we know.
So, at this point in time, we're looking really at an average.
Yes.
3%. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Thank you. Chris, so your original question regarding looking for sort of, not leadership, but direction, thank you. Yeah, because you can't get any leadership from this group.[524.82][524.82](Laughter). So, did the direction get answered, or do you need something more formal?
No, I think that's good, because what that'll do is that if all these recommendations from committee, the whole, once we got them all, we're still two outstanding ones, Public Works, and one is bylaw. It will then go to the next council meeting, all of them, which means that once you've approved that, you've approved the entire budget.
Okay, great, thank you. So, we don't need to move to receive or anything as long?
No, I don't believe so.
All right. Moving on then, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Day.
Something occurred to me during that last exchange. I just wanted to ask about amended budget, whether we would be looking at, because there are always a few unknowns in the budget, and then as we see how, how things actually come in, will we be looking at an amended budget later where we might have the option to fund some things a little bit differently, once we know what our revenue stream is looking like?
I'm not aware of any surprises at this point. There is likely to be an amendment required with gas tax funds, because we now have our year-end figures, and so staff are going over what has actually happened, which basically means we can't have money in next year's budget that's going to overspend the gas tax account. And at this point, it will, because of our 2013 numbers have come in. But I think, I haven't had a chance to really figure out what the actual change is going to be in projects, but I do not think it's going to be significant. So, it won't affect taxation, it'll just be gas tax projects that are being funded, and what is actually available next year, which may mean that one project has to come off the table.
Moving on to 3.2 then, bylaw, operating budget, page 13 to 17. Director of Finance, did you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee asked staff, actually, committee has recommended that all other budgets be forwarded to council for review. The only two that are outstanding at this time are the bylaw operating budget and the Public Works operating budget. These two budget were deferred primarily because of scheduling questions that were brought up as part of the budget review process. And I believe our CAO has done what he can to have discussions about flexibility with scheduling, and at this time, we are unable to make any changes to the current structure because of bargaining restrictions. So, staff are presenting the two final budgets here for review, and hopefully, recommendation to council.
Great, thank you. Chris, or Mr. CAO, did you have anything additional?
Mr. Chairman, if you, if council members, I did send out a member, a memo on January the 22nd regarding the holdup with these two issues. They are to do with the collective agreement in terms of trying to get a seven-day-a-week, longer hours for bylaw, and trying to find a different way of working Saturday drop, drop-off pickup with, drop-off without paying overtime. And when I approached the union, they said, everything is going on the side table as part of negotiations, they will not consider them. I then phoned GVLRA. GVLRA also said, on the management side, you shouldn't be doing anything either, because everything has to go onto the table for negotiations. However, unfortunately, negotiations haven't started yet, mainly because of the manager that was brought in left, and at the moment, there's nobody doing it. However, I have been in contact with the Director of HR for CRD, and also the individual who is negotiating the fire agreements, the GVLRA fire agreements. And I'm waiting for a response back in terms of when the bargaining might start, and what we have to put forward. I've already put forward the things that we want changed in the collective agreement, so that's there. The only thing I haven't done is refine the wording that's needed.
Okay, thank you. We're specifically talking just about bylaw right now and the bylaw budget. I will go to the public. Public, does any comments just regarding bylaw, in the bylaw budget? No? Okay, great. I will come to committee then. Committee, any comments or discussion? Councilor Lukens, then Day.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question with respect to the radios. I don't know what page it is for you, but it's page one of three on my iPad. At the top, it says forecast TCA costs, bylaw department, and it's got radios as the first item, $15,000 in 2018. I'm just wondering why that hit's all going to happen in one year and not be spread out? I see that in a few places, I'm just wondering why that is.
Director of Finance, you want to comment? Or do you, CAO, or who would like to?[880.32][880.32](Laughter).
Maybe you should, because I'm.
Right, the reason being is that it's all part of the Crest radio system, and I'm not, I'm sure it could be pushed over a number of years, and then put into reserve, but this is just as good a way of doing it. And in that particular period of time in 2018, that's when they would be replaced anyway. So, in terms of a technicality, I'm not sure what the Director of Finance prefers in terms of putting it overtime and putting it into a reserve, or just making it available at that year as a one-time cost.
Sorry, hold on. Did you want to comment on that? I had, Councilor Day was next up, but did you?
I'm not done.
Have something on that specific issue?
Just on that, just on that specific issue, actually, the timing might be great, because the Crest radio system will be undergoing a refresh anyways, and so it'll be about that time where new radios will be required as, as part of the refresh.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just wondering why we have to take a hit all in one year, and why we can't spread it out a little bit, so the pain's a little bit less. It's the same with the vehicles. There's, you know, $30,000 in 2014, and another, or 2015, and another 30 in 2017. Why can't we disperse it a little bit?
Well, one of the reasons I could suggest is, number one, that's in 2018, when you look at these costs. That doesn't mean council is obliged to purchase them. Once you start putting them in overtime, it sort of leads to a conclusion that you're going to purchase them. This gives council that decision, yes, we're going to go with them, or no, we're not. It doesn't pre-conclude that you are going to approve that purchase.
Director of Finance? And then, on this, on this issue? Okay.
The difference between those two is that the vehicles are funded via a reserve that is already established. The $15,000 is all from taxation, and we just felt that it's easier to, because the budget for this year and next year are already so tight, that it made more sense just to put it out in 2018, but like the CAO has said, you can decide to take it out as well.
Great, thank you. Councilor Day?
Thanks. It brought up for me why, you know, some things we have a reserve fund for, and some things we don't. I know that those Crest radios are important for fire and police as well, so I just, I'm wondering if it's going to be part of a bigger picture of renewal, then we may want to consider doing some sort of a reserve for those items, if there's going to be, you know, when we're just talking about bylaw, we're talking about three radios, it's not such a big deal. But if we're talking about fire and police as well, then that might warrant some thought. And my question was just on, I'm just trying to see what page, it's page one of five on my iPad of the, at the top, it's the bylaw department's operating budget and their summary of revenue and expenses. And we may have asked about this before when we were looking at things, I think it might be an anomaly, but I just wanted to make sure. Under the recurring operating expenses for maintenance, the second lineup from the bottom, it goes $3,700 in the budget in 2011, and then $7,400, the budget in 2012, and then that budget comes back down to $2,000 in 2013, and then up slightly in each of the following years. I'm just wondering if, is that an anomaly or an error?
It's possible that because, if committee will remember that, because of our transition to this new software, we've got the budgets where they're supposed to be now, but in prior years, some amounts, we didn't really know where to put them, so they had to go somewhere. And I would suspect that that has to do with that issue. And you'll see that in some circumstances where the number is really high, but it's because we, we weren't sure where to put it. It might have been a one-time budget item that no longer need to be in the budget.
Thank you.
Councilor Lukens?
Thank you. Just one further question with respect to this budget. This budget includes the three bylaw officers. From what I understand from the CAO, is we can't adjust scheduling or anything like that. As I had stated before, I'm not supportive of retaining three bylaw officers due to the cost, and it's the community and the citizens that we need to report to. And I've talked to some people, and it's not that I don't support the graffiti program, I totally do, and most people recognize that we don't have graffiti, but just the cost associated with retaining the third person is a concern. So, I'm not going to be supporting this, unfortunately, because that piece has not been addressed, and it's a piece that ever since we allowed the third bylaw officer to come forth, I believe it was in 2011 or 2012, I can't remember which year, but that there were asks, and we're in 2014, and they still haven't been fulfilled. I know they've been tried, you know, to gain some traction, but that's the reason I'm not going to be supporting this. Thank you.
Any other committee members? Seeing none, I'll just say my two bits, too. I concur with Councilor Lukens. I'm, I can't support three bylaw officers with the hours that they presently work, and, and I understand that that's under negotiations, but I cannot, at this time, support it. So, I won't be supporting the budget either, or this specific item. Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, did anybody else want to comment? I guess I got to move something, too. Sorry, but it looks like Mayor, did Mayor, did you have comment before we, may have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, how about this, that the committee recommend to council, the bylaw operating budget and five-year plan as presented at the February 11th, 2014, special committee of the whole meeting be approved.
Thank you.
I'll move it.
I'm sorry, was that Mayor? Was that Mayor? You're going to move it?
Well, it does, well.
How can you move it and vote against it? Can you, she do that?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Do I need to do discussion again, or are we good for calling the vote?
I think you always go through the process of.
Okay, any other discussion regarding that motion? Sorry, I should have had the motion first, my apologies. Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Moving on to 3.3, Public Works operating budget, 19 to 22. Looking to staff, anybody want, would like to comment on the budget? Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is another budget similar to bylaw, where there was some question that have union ramification. CAO, as previously mentioned, we kind of have to hold off on that at this time. So, the branch drop-off is included in the budget with the overtime as previously budgeted.
Great, thank you. I will go to the public. Public, do you have any comments regarding the budget item? Seeing none, I guess I should do, should I do a motion first?
I will move the, that we brought it to.
Thank you. Thank you. Discussion? Councilor Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Notwithstanding all the work that our CAO has done to bring this to light, I still morally find it difficult to, to fund a service at overtime rates. And considering that this has been an issue that's been on the budget table for the last two years, well ahead of the bargaining process, that hopefully should, you know, could have been wrapped up prior to, it's just, I don't think that we can justify to the public any longer that, that we run the service at overtime rates. And unfortunately, based on that, you know, I won't be able to support the Public Works budget at this time, because of that one item, which, which could have been addressed previously, but anyways, that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Lukens?
I also align with Councilor Logan on this one. It's one that we've talked about since the election. I also, you know, appreciate what has been done with respect to trying to get some resolution and some answers, but once again, I cannot support paying overtime for this service when it's becoming something that is a very regular occurring opportunity for our community, and it needs to be worked in as such, as far as, as far as I'm concerned with our work schedule. So, I will not be supporting it due to that as well.
Councilor Day?
I'd just like to, you know, I feel very similarly. I don't think that Saturday work shifts should be at, at time and a half for, for a service that, you know, is very predictable and, and very understandable and necessary. And I think I do really want to see that addressed, but I'm not sure that I'm ready to hold up approval of the budget in order to accomplish that, because we work in a, in a union environment, and there is a process that needs to take place. And, and we're close, but we're not there yet. So, I guess I'm a little more flexible in that I'm willing to approve this budget with the understanding that we are going to negotiate away from the way that it has been done, and to a better system for the residents of Callwood.
Councilor Culleton, then Mayor Hamilton?
Thank you. I concur with Councilor Day's approach that, and I, I'm going back a number of budget years when we were looking at a very, very big increase, and we had, I mean, this room was packed, and people were saying, this is important, this is not important. One of the things I found absolutely fascinating is the number of people who said, yes, we know it's going to cost us extra, but you'd better keep that branch drop-off program at two times a month, this is really important to us. So, from that perspective, I'm quite happy to support the budget the way it is. What I would suggest is that we, as a committee, might want to look at making a follow-up recommendation, both on this and on bylaw, that we're providing clear direction to our incoming CAO, that we do expect to see this resolved through the, as much as possible through those union negotiations.
Thank you. Mayor Hamilton?
And I'd just like to bring another perspective to it. I sat in my office today, looking out the window, and hearing the beep, beep, beep of the loader and, and the dump truck out there as they loaded, truckload after truckload of chipped product that was headed out into our parks, and mulching around on the trees. They've just finished doing the little park area there across from the Callwood Fire Hall. What's the cost of that, if we had to go and purchase that product, some other location, the time that it would take to go and get it, and bring it back into the community? And we have it right here in the yard for, for our staff to work with, to help in keeping, you know, a standard in our parks. So, again, I, I understand, you know, the whole idea of the excess of overtime and trying to cut, cut our corners and, and, you know, be strategic in, in how we spend our money and that sort of thing, but a decision like that has a ripple effect in the community. So, I know, Councilor Logan, that you have spoken very passionately about how you feel of beautification in our community, and we're taking a source away in, in this if we don't.
The tree companies dump it for free anyways, so.
Oh, well, yeah, no, it's part of, of the process out there.
Yep. Thank you.
Anyways, that's mine.
Okay. I, I'm going to talk first, sorry, CAO. I know, I let you, I'm not going to be supporting that either. I think until we get a resolution on the overtime, I think we can easily offer the tree to branch off on a Friday or Monday for those people, and those people who don't have the ability to do that on the, will, you know, just have to understand that, that this council's trying to be economic with, with their, their tax dollars. At least that's how I feel about it. Mr. CAO?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to bring to everyone's attention, we're at the final stages of the budget process, and if this is stalled, that means the entire budget process is stalled, that's number one. Number two, I think the public enjoy this, this, this drop-off, and it's a very high-profile drop-off, just like it is at a number of other municipalities. And I think it would be, although there's a cost implication here, it's not, it's not huge, but I think there would be more of a backlash if this program was canceled, or even pushed to another day of the week, because I think a lot of people have Saturdays off, it gives them an opportunity to come to our drop-off and drop their material off. So, I think that although. So I think that although this, you might think this might be a, a, a good way to try and force the issue, remembering always that the, that the negotiating of the union contract will probably not finish before the end of this year. So it's that far, that's what I think at the moment, how far away it is, and I think that holding the budget up because of this one issue, I think would be an error. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? It fails. Moving on to, well, that's it, unless there's something under new business? Great. Next meeting, we don't have a date? Do we have a date for the next meeting, or no?
No, there's no date for the next meeting.
Then I'll just look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor? Carried. And we'll be back in ten minutes, fifteen.
Depending on what clock you're looking at.
It's fast.
I have so much work to do to calculate all of that, so I need at least two months, and so we have to meet our statutory deadlines, I need fourteen at the latest. I've got to have things on the agenda by the week before, which means I have to, and I need adoption, not any first, second, third, and then at the next meeting, I need adoption. So like, I passed my look at the calendar today, the three, the latest, and I mean, like, I don't know how many...
So what we could do is, you know, get it in the air, suggesting a look further to this meeting, because they're just...
Three thousand dollars? It costs three thousand versus a seven hundred. Do they understand the reward?
So I think the big thing here is that we can do is ask for reconsideration of this one, and hopefully make sure that raises here, and the mayor can find out which is your vote in favor, so talk to the council to arrange this to be pulled back, otherwise it's a draw. Yeah, on a different day. Yeah, but that won't work, because the majority of the public won't open on the weekend. It's the weekend that they need, yeah. So, what we should do is, if you can get your statutory requirements done, so we can send an email, say this is how this is, and that, you know, we can't tolerate a delay, basically.
Well, it's going to have to be the next meeting, because Pat and I were talking about the whole thing about the sewer, if that doesn't go on the agenda at the next meeting and get resolved, we, we need time to calculate, Gary needs at least three weeks to calculate out the user fee, but we also have to test the taxes with the mill rates to make sure we're going to raise enough before we bring the bylaw forward. There's so much work, we got parts of tax review, and all of that's starting like next week, I've got to prepare the ad, and then audits starting next week, so like, I don't know how, I honestly, I don't know when I can come back to this. Just not that...
No, because the thing is, we can't afford, without this, there's at least, it's a western, it's a soul. So then you're...
I have the practice of having to revise my taxes, I don't have time to be stressed, so I...
I think we'll just make plans for residents.
Let me watch the instant replay.
It's like the NFL, you're, the referee's going under the hood.
But you said it.
Okay.
You said it, you said it was a meeting, by you saying it's even as you say that you're...
Let's get some...
No, it's pretty good as watching, like, just because it was two, I think, and I was hot in the middle, but it's no big deal.
Well, I'm confused, because I, I'm confused as well, because I think it's still, I'll just talk to Mayor, but I can see you could have...
She just did, said it, which assumes that...
Somebody pulled out a law enforcement rule and says that, you know, the chair is not supposed to speak on stopping, and we found out that the chair is allowed to speak on stopping, that the law enforcement rule doesn't.
Doesn't apply, it depends, right? It's a guideline.
I don't know what I'm doing.
Well, you don't have to always... What are we doing with Mr. Sylvester tonight? I don't know, I'm staying out of that, I know. I don't think that we should be getting any more money.
No, and...
Oh, is this about the hook?
No, we, we have a budget, I don't think we should go above it, but I also looked through everything, I didn't see any one anywhere behind the clock, did you? No. I just took a quick look, there was no current, and that's what you do.
No, I remember you guys showing, it's going to be a soft cover.
No, it was supposed to be hardcover from the very beginning, that's what was said, and everything, I mean, you have to really look at things, right?
That's why you have the person who...
No, it has to be hard, hardcover, I mean, no, wait, it's in the minutes. I wrote that down, because it was important.
Chris is hoping that we can talk about that one more, because we have statutory deadlines that have to be met.
With respect to the...
With the budget, and plus we, like, once we have the okay, but that's the budget.
Let's just talk to them.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome, you're welcome. Don't ever say I don't take care of you.
I, I appreciate it.